All amending to order at seven o'clock. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of its stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any changes or additions to the agenda?
None for me to approve, Darren.
Oh.
Oh, no, no.
The Personnel Committee had a quick meeting today to discuss a couple applicants we had for Marley's position.
New business or what?
New business number six.
Sure.
Uh, the applicants didn't quite check all the boxes. We'll put that down here. Oh, right. Yep. Sorry. With that addition, is there any other changes?
Hold the pool with the addition.
No, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Consent agenda?
Yes, you have the, uh, you have the minutes from November fourteenth, our last meeting, then you have the receivables, the budget report, payables, um, a couple payables to point out, or do you want to go first, Andrew?
I'm good.
Election judges were paid, so you'll see their names for their payment. Uh, we did buy some new notebooks for the squad cars, so you'll see that in there. There was a little bit of a payment made to, uh, finish up the Elkie Park in the Northwood subdivision. There's some work done on main lift station, and we had a partial payment for that housing study that's about done. We about have that wrapped up, so there's a payment in here tonight for part of that work as well.
Are they still coming on, uh, the twelve for presentation, as far as I know?
Yep.
Which will be our next meeting?
Yep.
I just had one thing to add. Um, there was one more payable after packets were put together to, um, Ironsleek for eight, eight hundred and forty-nine seventy-nine. It's for a new, um, ice rink liner, so.
Is that here?
It's ordered, not yet.
It wouldn't freeze that well today, anyway.
No.
I'm waiting for you to make a motion to approve it.
I was going for all, and this is where he goes.
Well, I wasn't here last meeting, so.
It's on you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Oh, wait a second.
All in favor?
But are you two both abstaining? We're gonna have to table the minutes.
Well, to table that, so we have another guy?
Correct.
Okay.
So you can approve the other two items in the consent agenda?
So I think John made a motion, Andy made the second, to approve.
Approve everything except the minutes.
Receivables and payables, yep.
All in favor of that? You two can blow it out there, so we're all aye.
Aye.
Okay. Public forum? Public forum? Public forum? Notice of communications?
Uh, you have a flyer in your packet from the Conservation Minnesota. That's all I have for you.
Council reports?
Oh, we had a nursing home meeting last Monday. Everything is pretty much status quo down there. Obviously, there's still a hiring problem. We did implement a raise, a pay, it's actually a pay raise across the board, not just a starting wage, which will bring its own levels, but nurses' assistance up about four dollars an hour, and, um, try to entice more help. Apparently, we dipping into the pool a lot to get help, which costs us substantially, so if we could hire our own, we'd clearly be better off. But I think everybody's in the same hiring issue right now, so.
Temps come in, aren't they?
Yeah, the pool is, you basically get temps in, and you have to, you pay more, you have to give them room and board, it's a get-to-costly, but that's not really a job you can go without personnel, so.
Probably set down there pretty good.
Yes. Probably a break even.
Yeah, good.
Which is.
No, it's good.
Yep.
Any other council reports?
We'll catch ours on.
Okay, that'll work. Administrator report?
I know it's my time.
Oh, it's you.
All right, attaching your packet, the cash balance report dated last, uh, Wednesday, November twenty-third, when we sent the packets out. Uh, the park equipment and the signs have been installed at Elkie Park in the Northwood subdivision, so you can drive by there if you haven't yet, check it out, sure you have.
Looks nice, yep. Some of our finest down there raking, uh, some wood chips around today, I've seen. That looks nice.
Uh, the Housing Institute, we are meeting tomorrow again in the afternoon. We're gonna go over what we're gonna discuss and kind of the game plan for our next city council meeting, which, like Andy was just saying, that will be the meeting that we hear the results of the housing study that we did this year. Um, we'll get some ideas at that meeting, some direction from the council, and we'll move into the new year getting ready to get some, uh, housing ideas in town. Uh, Andy, you still coming on Wednesday?
Yes, I am.
Andy and I are gonna go to New Richland on Wednesday morning. The, the league has regional meetings down there at City Hall, so we're gonna go down there. And then, speaking of Wednesday, um, I'm gonna be out for a few days, just basically hunting, I'll be in the area, but I'll be out for a few days, so just if anything pops up, call, I'll be around. And that's all I have.
Motion to approve.
Um, get my safe routes?
Safe routes?
Nope, I didn't. Um, last, last council meeting, uh, Jim O'Kay asked to kind of get an update with the safe routes of what we've spent and, and things. Uh, Andrea put a bunch of material together, we're getting a few final figures from Bolton and Mankin, and we'll try to get that to you at the next meeting. Yep, sorry about that, I skipped right over it.
All right, now you can. Motion to approve the, uh, administrator report. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do we want to bring Joe up twice, or you wanted to save him for his budget? We'll just skip you once, we'll come back to you here in a second, Joe.
Don't you just feel wrong with Joe, they're skipping right over you?
Okay, old business number one, we have a deferred assessment.
Yes, we, uh, we received the paperwork, all the necessary documents, uh, for deferring the assessments at six oh-two North Main Street, which is the assessments from the Summers project. Need a motion to adopt resolution number forty, and I'll send it all to the county.
Yeah, yeah, I'll see.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Joe, now you can come up.
Okay, so tonight, we're gonna look at the draft of the sanitary sewer budget, as well as the storm sewer budget, and we will adopt these, obviously, at our next council meeting when we, when we do the rest, you know, the general fund budget. Um, you can interrupt me whenever you want here, Joe, but basically, both of the budgets did not change too much, there's just a, a few things that were added for lift station repairs, um, the intakes at the, at the ponds outside of town. We did add a line item for fuel. In years past, the fuel was just kind of taken out of the public works department, but now we, we're gonna be taking out of sanitary. Um, many thanks to Andrea and Joe for putting this together. Anything else to add?
Anything else?
Was this a reworking on, like, the accounts that we're putting things in? Only reason I ask is because if you look under the year-to-date total on the top, like, it's line item, I had anything that proceeds from debt and things like that, or I had it, just, I just missed it down, I'm sorry.
The proceeds from the debt, that's due to the street project this year.
I think it was also, like, under the salary, 'cause it goes from ninety-seven to a hundred to eighty-eight, and so I just figured there must be some reworking of accounts here, or...
We took all of the on-call pay out of the public works and we put it into the sewers, so that's why there's that increase on top of the four percent that you guys have budgeted for all wages for cost of living.
Yeah, just a couple big, big ticket, I forgot the second half of the AMI for the new meters coming due, um, and then, just an update down at the main lift station, there's four pumps down at our main lift station on the southwest corner of town. This year, we replaced two of those pumps, we put brand-new pumps in, um, and that has drastically cut down our pump times, saving electricity and, and costs, but in, in that well, there's L- base elbows, what those pumps sit on. Those are getting up in years, you know, twenty, thirty years old now, um, so rather than wait until something happens, we're gonna, hopefully next year, um, replace those base elbows, um, and check valves, so it'd be four base elbows and those four check valves that go along with it. Um, what will happen, we'll have to shut off flow totally to our main lift station, we'll have to bring in back trucks, pumper trucks, whatever we need to do to, to make that, sure that there's no flow, and then, uh, crews will come in, hammer those out, and get them replaced. And then, the other thing was out at the ponds where our main intake structure is, it's made out of concrete, obviously wastewater is pretty corrosive, so it chews away kind of at that concrete, and so hopefully, I'm, I'm gonna try to do it at the same time while that flow is shut off, we're gonna bring a crew in and line that concrete structure.
Is that in the big pond, or?
Yep, up on the, the north side of the road. Yep, yep.
How long do you anticipate being shut down?
Day, probably, full day, two maybe tops.
Is that something you think you could do at night? Have they looked into that?
Well, the flows are a little lower, maybe, is that what you mean?
Um. Like knockout one a night?
You think they are lower at night with more people home?
Yeah.
It ebbs and flows kind of throughout the day, I have to look at the chartings to see where the flow's, you know, right, but, but yeah.
We can shut down out there for a couple days.
Yeah, I would take coordination rather with you, you know, that would help quite a bit.
Yep.
So, and then just looking ahead even further down at the main lift station, there's that silver panel, um, probably the next budget cycle, we're gonna be looking at upgrading all of those controls, too, so possibly setting, uh, you know, a structure down there, a building with all our variable frequency drives and all our controls, um, in a controlled temperature environment, so I think that'd help out quite a bit, too.
And that's how the equipment and repair is done, right? If I'm following you correctly?
Most of it is, yes, most of it, yeah. Yep, yep. Lift repair, fuel, AMI, I think that pretty much sums it up for sanitary.
And a storm?
Yeah, I mean, storm's pretty straightforward, too, not much has changed, um, I know a lot, kind of depends on, the county just redetermined judicial ditch eleven out here at the channel, and so we'll have to see when that comes through, what that's gonna look like for our storm, our storm fund, as far as funding that, too, so.
And that's the main reason why we, one of the main reasons, we created the Storm Fund a few years back, is for, is for that.
Yep.
Yep.
And keep in mind, like, with the, the next page, they're showing this graph, when we built the storm sewer, the rate structure, we built it, we averaged everything out over ten years, so that's why you see the high increase, but that's gonna come back down. So, that's how we built it, so.
Any questions?
Anything else under your department head you want to talk about, or?
Just on to the next season, the lovely snow season, um, you know, we touched about the ice rink, uh, every year we get a new liner, just 'cause they get so cut up and stuff, so that should be shipped here this week, hopefully by, you know, next week, possibly, there's some favorable temperatures coming through, so hopefully, maybe sooner rather than later, we'll get that puppy out. And like you said, Elkie Park, um, they shorted us, um, I know some people were kind of concerned, but they, we didn't get it finished right away, but they shorted us some border materials, uh, when we got the shipment, and so them just came in today, actually, and we, we had just went out and installed them quick and then finished that up, so there's just some little back dragging to do with some black dirt, and then that, um, that project will be complete, so. That's it. Anything else?
For me?
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Can we go get the plow ready?
Yeah. So I'll get it in spring.
Quentin, you have an update for us on, uh?
Yeah, I do, I, it's sideways, upside down and everything, so give me about ten minutes so I can figure this out. There we go. Um, when we looked at our preliminary budget last September, the general fund budget, do you remember, we had a, it was a thirteen-point-three percent increase in the, in the proposed tax levy? Andy and I did some visiting, uh, we did a lot of talking, we updated a few things. Our insurance numbers all came back more favorable than what we had, than what we had budgeted for, so we lowered those expenses. Um, as you can see on the bottom of the screen, we went from thirteen-point-three percent to nine-point-nine. So if it's okay with the council, we will present that at the December twelfth council meeting, when we have our annual budget meeting. I do want to point out, and this may lead into the agenda item that we added tonight, in order to make this work, to get down below ten, um, we did, after visiting a while, we did reduce the wages for the community development director position, instead of budgeting for twelve months of pay, we did nine, we did nine.
Nine, okay.
And I'm just gonna, that's food for thought for the next conversation we have here in a few minutes.
Realistically, it's hard to hire anybody, and we were trying to get the budget out, and that was a good spot to work from.
Yeah, so that's, it's good news. Nine-point-nine's better than thirteen. Any questions on that, or?
Council happy with that for our next meeting?
Definitely.
New business number one, Luke Cahill, front and center.
Okay, Mr. Cahill has a proposal for a Eagle Scout project. Get it on the screen here, Luke. There you go.
Yep, so my name's Luke Cahill, I'm from Scout Troop Eighty-Nine in, here in Jamesville, um, and I'm, yeah, spreading my, the word about my Eagle Scout service project. Uh, my project is to collect Christmas trees with the help of volunteers after the holiday season for the people inside the city limits of Jamesville. Um, my project will take place on January seventh, uh, but I'm asking people to have their trees out the day before, so they can be collected on the curb. I think this is a good service project for the community, and, uh, I'm wondering if the city council has any recommendations for continuing this in the future?
I think it would be fabulous.
I think it's a good project.
Yeah, definitely.
I don't see any issue with it in the future, I think people will love it.
Yeah, for sure.
I assume we'll have a spot out there for him, Bedoungaman?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Luke.
Thank you, Luke.
New business number two is amending sanitary sewer chapter fifty-one.
That's why Ron's here. Okay, our, right now, our city code basically has paragraph A in the sanitary sewer chapter, which, uh, says that you shall make no connections, you know, that would, some pump connections or I N I flow problems into our system. Letter B is, help me out, Ron, Blooming Prairie?
Blooming Prairie, correct.
Uh, Ron works, uh, with Blooming Prairie as well, and in their, in their city code, they have the paragraph B that says anybody who is selling or transferring the ownership of their property to another person needs to, uh, get a video and the video to report to, basically to Joe, so he can have on record that there is no connections that we are to be concerned about. What this would require, obviously, is a public hearing, 'cause we're amending the city code, so if the council is okay with this, we can get that scheduled here in the next, whatever, four, five, six weeks, maybe after the holidays, but we can have a couple other items at that public hearing that we are.
We have a few we've been talking about.
Now, I was approached, 'cause it doesn't state who pays for this video.
That was my question.
Well, in the metro, Blooming Prairie, Merton Center, all the small towns we work with, the realtor will sit down with the buyer and the seller and hash out who's gonna, who's gonna pay that bill. Usually, it's the seller that ends up paying it, but that's not anything you guys can control.
How are we gonna police it as a city to make sure it gets done?
We'll police our own when we're, when we get called, 'cause we collect on-site with work on.
What if we don't, what if, what if I sell a house and I just don't do it?
Then the city comes after you, just like with the I N I inspections, if you wouldn't notice and vows.
Okay.
Then you are fined so much.
Okay.
Police Center has very similar ordinance like this, and it, it's, it's worked pretty good for Police Center, and how Police Center picks up on it is, is when the utilities are put in somebody else's need. That's usually when, uh, when we kind of figure it out, utilities and then switch.
Maybe I'll call Dan and see if I can get a copy of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Utilities switch, but then it would have to be through a sale, I assume.
Correct.
I mean, through rentals, utilities are switched all the time.
Correct. But you guys should know who your rentals are.
Right. We do.
I think that's how Police Center usually catches it, when utilities are switched.
Good idea.
Now, I wanna say it's a couple hundred bucks, two-hundred-and-fifty bucks, something like that.
Right.
It's really no different than a septic inspection if you're in the company.
Right.
Yep.
The goal is just to make sure people are adhering to the ordinance?
Completely, yep.
Normally, for the video, we're two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, like in Maine, Cato, Blooming Moss, and wherever, but if we travel to Jamesville, we're gonna charge sixty-seven-fifty for the travel and cut the video down to one-seventy-five, so. Really, they're, that's all they're paying you.
Yep.
So with the first wave, when you did all them I N I inspections, ten, was it ten years ago, probably? Or longer than that?
I don't know, it was in two thousand and seven.
Yeah, it was like fifteen, sixteen years ago. Um, where did we ever end up on that? Did we get a lot of that corrected, or?
No, yeah.
A lot of it, some of it, no, but that's just people, there's nothing you can really do about it.
Right.
But also with the streets now that have been done, corrected a lot of the I N I that was given Jamesville a problem. And Allen Street was horrendous.
Right.
And, and Fourth wasn't good either.
Um, I think what we'll do is I'll, I'll get in touch with the Center and see if I can grab some of that language, and then we'll.
Very similar to what you got right there.
Sure, okay. All right, thank you, Ron, for working with Joe on this, too. You just missed not coming to these meetings, it's the only reason you're here.
Just wanted to see your smiling face. Christmas time, you get to say aye to the aunts, kid.
Thank you! Oh, good one, Ronnie. I'm red, aren't I? Oh, yeah. I have, what's your? I'm gonna get even with them.
New business number three, we have a donation to the Disc Golf Course.
Yep, we did receive an anonymous donation of six hundred dollars for the Disc Golf Course Fund, so this resolution accepts that money.
I don't know the resolution, twenty-twenty-two dash forty-two.
Second.
I mean, uh, forty-one, I'm sorry.
Forty-one?
Yeah, jump to one, forty-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Trail grant application, new business number one.
Yes, uh, Waseka County Highway Department has applied for, it's called the DOT Active Transportation Program. Uh, the path that goes out to Lakeview Park is, uh, it needs to be replaced, it's in pretty bad shape, so, so Jim Kohler, the highway engineer, put the first round application together, we got through that hoop, the second step is to get approval from both the county board and a resolution support from the city council. So tonight's resolution says that you support this joint effort.
Definitely. Second.
I have a question. The last paragraph there states this, cost will be shared between Waseka and with the county in Jamesville.
Yep.
And it's an open agreement, it doesn't mention a percentage split or anything like that?
No, so.
Is that something that's normal?
And there's two parts to the answer. First of all, we're applying for this grant, and if we get the grant, it won't cost a penny, but if we decide to do the project anyway, then there will be a, there's a county, county has a policy on cost participation agreements, so we would, we'd use that document, and we would then have an agreement that the city council will sign with the county board when that time comes.
Right now, this is just for grant purposes.
Yep. So the trail is a little over a hundred thousand, so if we get the grant, you know, it'd be completely free.
Anything you'd like to add, Andy?
Just appreciate the support, um, I walk the, the trail out there, too, and it's a wonderful asset to the city, and I live here, and if you wanna do it in the city, I appreciate the engineers and, uh, extra efforts that apply with grants.
Okay, back to Melissa motioned?
Yep.
Jim, second? John, second? Whatever, Jim, John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I was just talking.
New business number five, rental license for vacation here in one-thirty-eight North Main.
Yes, um, do you wanna?
Yes.
Jason, do you want?
Yeah, Jason, why don't you?
All right, just to kind of give you an update as to what is going on here, one-thirty-eight North Main, just to the northeast of here.
Jason Moran is our city attorney, for those who don't know.
Uh, a fairly large building just to the northeast of here on the corner, right behind us, it consists of some commercial rental on main level, and then on the second story, there are some rental units, there are six units there. Those six units were recently inspected by Dan Murphy, our building inspector, who's here tonight, and Mr. Murphy found that the units do not have sufficient heat, in fact, it's questionable whether they have any heat. Now, there is some different story between the property company and, uh, the, some of the other people involved, as to whether they do have heat, building inspector has found that, that they have insufficient heat, and at some point in time, this is going to have to be addressed. You know, obviously, we're in winter, we've got some cold temperatures coming up, um, so I reached out to the attorney for the, um, property management company, and the attorney essentially told me that they're not gonna have heat for the foreseeable and the attorney essentially told me that they're not gonna have heat for the foreseeable future. And the attorney essentially told me, there's probably not gonna be before, until June of this year. Um, I really didn't take too kind to that, to be quite honest with you. There shouldn't be anybody go with little heat or no heat or insufficient heat, however you wanna phrase it. They should have heat up to city standard and up to state standard for the winter. So I had this calendar for tonight, and I appreciate the council doing that. I did speak with the attorney for some of the tenants who was involved in this situation, and also the property maintenance company. And those two parties are in the process of trying to work some things out, and they both asked that I come to the council tonight and ask you not to take any action on this issue tonight, but to give them some time to work this out. And so I told the attorney, I said, how much time do you need? Because you're not gonna get a whole lot of time. And the attorney, and the tenant's attorney essentially said, can you give us two weeks? Two weeks, in my opinion, is, is pushing it a little bit. Um, I'm told that there is heat. I'm told that they are in the process of, of trying to work things out, and that that may include a displacement of some tenants. Um, and how that will unfold really doesn't involve the city. That's really an issue between the property maintenance company and the tenants. Um, the one thing that I don't, as the city wanna do, is I don't want the city to really get involved in this from a tenant, property management, fight type of issue. Uh, the city controls the license, and we will maintain control of that license. But I would ask that you table this until December 12th. We'll give those parties two weeks to sort this out. If it isn't sorted out December 12th, then we're gonna take it to a different level. Now, there's limited enforcement mechanisms that the city could use anyway. Let's say the city would revoke the license. I mean, your options, essentially, if we get back here on December 12th and there's no movement, our options at that point in time are gonna be, number one, revoke the license, or, number two, suspend the license pending the restoration of heat. And when the heat is restored, they get their license back, provided they meet all of the other inspection requirements. Um, you know, tho, those would essentially be your two options on December 12th, if we don't have some, uh, some movement on this. I'm hopeful that by December 12th, it's taken care of. I was led to believe here today that it was. My conversation with the two attorneys was fairly positive. So I would ask, a little reluctantly, I would ask that you table this issue until the 12th. Give them some time to figure it out. If they do, great. If they don't, we'll re, that's, we'll readdress it December 12th.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
What prompted the, what prompted the inspection?
I don't know what prompted the inspection. Inspection can be requested by tenants, the property owner, a drive-by person.
For any reason, at any time, I do property management where I'm at right now. And we're kind of governed by the city, our whole license. They can come at any time, any day, and we have to act to the fact, or exactly the reason we stated, we're all in this place. I think that's more than me, in my office.
Any questions for Dan Murphy, Inspector?
It was the property management company that requested the inspection. And you'd be pretty honest and forthright and credible about it.
And the heat's the big issue you have a problem with right now?
Yeah, heat, the other stuff is minor, it's a little minor. Um, we can rectify it anytime. But, yeah, heat is, it's sort of kind of a deal.
Does the tenant on the main level have heat, I assume?
Main level does have heat, and also will have some, you know, injections or heat rising. But, uh, yeah, without heat, if we stay outside above negative temperatures, like, the plumbing will be okay, I think. So, uh, it's still pretty uncomfortable. We did some inspections within the one unit, and they have these roller space heating in it, and it's right up against combustible material, so it was quite hot. So that's the danger of not having heat, is you're running high enough power to heat, and that, it heats, it heats the lines up, heats the, uh, they're not careful where you put the heat, so that's another concern.
And I think I and Dan have done just about everything that we can to let the property maintenance company know that they should not have tenants living in this kind of situation. It is dangerous. So no apartment has any, there's no apartment that has heat?
Uh, just units one through six, which is, excuse me, all the upper level apartments, uh, with all the heat. So the main floor does have heat. I think, uh, we didn't get into those units, so they must have individual or shared units, maybe somewhere else in the building.
Units one and two are on the same unit that heats the insurance office, so there's some discrepancies here.
Okay, and number two was cold, so, I mean, I was feeling heat pushing out, um, getting established and pushing.
Someone alter any movers or anything, you know?
Looks like it was all open to me, so. I mean, some of the stuff's pretty high in the ceiling, so I can't climb up there to look at it.
That's where- So one and two should have heat, the insurance office has heat, so.
Uh, not familiar with the whole work until the building, I was only invited up to the second floor.
And you were told that there is some heat, or just? I was given two different, I was given two different stories. If there is heat, if there's not heat. Is there sufficient power to the building? I don't know. That's a property maintenance question. And why wouldn't you just fix it? That's a question I had. It's always been my experience, anything can be fixed. It might be a matter of cost, but, um, I don't, I, I don't know what's wrong.
Um, cost, timing, age of equipment. Um, I did read a couple of emails that the management company sent me from two different heating contractors, and parts, and new units are $27.00 class. And it's, I'm injured, please, they answered now, initially, uh, from that cell. I mean, there's other options. You know, if they have the power enough, they could have electric, they could order heat. They could do individual or shared units. I think those are still relatively available, but, uh, not my idea to be able to look for.
Nor is it the city's end of the deal to look at that. Right now, we're just here to look at-
Correct.
The safety of the tenants and whether the license should be in place.
That's the end of the story. They have insufficient heat.
Well, with Jason's recommendation-
So these rooftop units do require three phases, and we did run out of three phases two times in the last four years, I believe, four, five years. The wild lake was getting the alley broken. That would cause those units to shut down.
Yes. Again, that would be something probably to relate to the, to the property managers or the property owners. Our aspect as a city is we're strictly looking at the rental license right now.
Were you guys the previous owners?
Yes.
And we've, we've maintained that system for many years. When did it change? June, August, probably the first in August. So I would suggest that you guys give, give all the parties involved two weeks, and if it isn't resolved in two weeks.
Like one of the two options.
One of the two options.
Yep.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
I will motion to, uh, in addition to 14 days?
No, just table it.
Table it for 14 days?
Yeah, just table it till the 12th.
Okay, that's my question.
Second. All in favor?
I, I-
Any other questions on anything besides this?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Dan.
New business number six, personnel committee.
Uh, Amy, I'm in, I'm in. And, you know, while we have the big shoes to fill, and there's a lot of boxes to check, and we're finding it hard to find applicants that check all those boxes. And in an effort to not, um, sell ourselves short, we are going to either postpone or present the option of doing a ceiling with potential applicants. Um, you know, only reservation is, we just wanna make sure they check all the boxes as best we can do for the staff.
Did we have a current deadline on the applications?
It was, yeah. It was the, two Fridays ago. What was that, the 18th?
So are we looking at putting on another one with a new deadline?
We would probably have to, or if the city council, you know, would motion tonight, we've done this in the past, where the city council has just said, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna step back for a couple, three months, and we'll revisit it after the holidays, or we'll start over in February or something.
Alex, do that, so we can go for the holidays and then revisit it.
And Clayton, she has discussed this with Andrew and Sarah, so as not to, you know, just bring additional work without that. So it's been discussed, and they're keeping good communication amongst each other, and I'll just go back.
I think we need to look at it shortly after the first of the year. I don't wanna be down too long and miss a potential good candidate, but, yeah, why don't we just look at it after the first of the year? Do you need a motion on that?
I would appreciate a motion, and then I will send letters to the applicants-
Yes.
-after the attorney reads it.
Go ahead.
I will motion to postpone the, um, what is it called? What is the position called again?
Community Development.
The Community Development position until after the new year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
7:40.
Springer, right.
I motioned it.
Yep.
Why don't you come on your budget, Dean? Why don't you come on your budget? 3% is already, yeah, yeah.